Or you need to change the background that's more wintery. More, more like a, you know, like a couple of ice fisherman in the background or something.
I like to think of the warmer times.
Alrighty, I think I have five o'clock. Everyone ready? Alright, here we go. Alright, so today is Monday, February 1st, 2021. This is the Village of Oregon Village Board Meeting. Would you like to do the real call please?
Horton?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Oleg?
Oleg is here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Stitch?
Stitch is here.
Jacobson?
Jacobson's here.
Glish?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks buddy. Alright, so the first item on our agenda is the community input. And this is part of our night where anyone from the public can bring anything up to us that's not on the agenda. We typically can't provide much information or many answers because it's not on the agenda, but we can always put it on a future agenda. So is there anyone from the public who would like to bring something to our attention or just make an announcement at this time?
This is Kirk Keller with Plunkett Research Architects asking for a moment to speak and to be followed by Joe Galena of Pine Cove Development.
Sure, Joe, are you talking about something that's on the agenda tonight or something different?
It's something on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay. Do you? Do you want to wait until we get there or do you guys, are you guys on a, on a schedule? Do you want to do it now?
No, we're, we're open for, for discussion here. The, Miss Cruz simply informed us that since it's, it's, it's not a, it's a voting situation for, I think it's item number nine on the Lake Stone Development, that it needed, our comments needed to come during the community input. If that's not the case, we'll certainly wait.
No, no, I think, no, why don't you, why don't you go ahead now? Elise, does that sound okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds good. I just know that there was the public hearing that happened, the planning commission. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to take further comments for the S I P when we get to that, or if it would be more appropriate for them.
Yeah. Gotcha. So yeah, so Mr. Keller, um, do you, um, so just, and you're welcome to give comments as well. Remind you that we, we have, we have heard from you at the joint meeting and we have some information in the, in our packet. Do you have new information for us tonight?
Uh, I think it's just an underlining of three points and then Mr. Galena wished to speak. I think I would take about sixty to ninety seconds and then to Mr. Galena.
Sure, yeah, go for it.
I appreciate it. Uh, the board, uh, I, sorry, I haven't met you before. Kirk Keller, I'm an architect here in Madison representing Galena Properties, specifically referring to discussion that you're going to vote on tonight for the Lake Stone Development. And specifically, a building is identified in the, in the development as building number three. It seems that through the process that it's a little just jointed. I'd like to bring up just three points for your consideration when you start to look at this package. One, we've pointed out to your city fire inspector, the number of items that we have seen for building number three that fall outside the parameter of codes for the international fire code. There has been trading going on with that. We believe it still is an area that there should be discussion and concern for this board. Secondly, that this falls under your M R eight zoning. And there's quite a bit of language in there about scale of development and working with adjoining neighbors. That process really did not occur. And by the time we got to S I P, it seemed like there was a pretty much a, a mindset to it. We're asking for reconsideration. And then lastly, there is a, convenience store car wash and gas station that's portrayed as a conceptual drawing. Well, it's very highly developed down to the, uh, the garbage cans at, at the, uh, at the gas islands. And it's, it's really doesn't pay attention to a lot of, of, of the design concerns that need to happen between the two properties. Yet the plant commission shunted it sideways by saying that's something that we taken up in the future where I think it's something that if it's proposed, the plant commission should look at. I serve on a number of boards myself. And it just, uh, the final comment I'd like to wrap up with is that we're asking for the, this project to be potentially tabled, to be taken back into review, to be looked at for under a full, full view from all the various departments that have control over it. Thank you. Joe?
Thank you.
And then Mr. Galena? Yes, this is Joe Galena. I'm the owner of Pine Cove, Pine Cove Apartments directly to the east. Um, I've shared my concerns with the village through various correspondence. And I'm here to answer any questions. If the board members have any questions regarding that. Feel strongly that the original concept C site design is a superior design than the current S I P before you. The concept C creates more open space, more green space, more amenities for the residents. I believe concept C would provide for longer term tenants who'd enjoy living in that apartment community. And then finally, I'd like to know the details that was brought up in the planning commission regarding moving the building ten feet and the installation of white pine trees. There's been no follow-up detail regarding the number of pine trees and where they'd be planted. I'm also, I'll be, we'll be here through the meeting. So if you have questions when the S I P comes up, we're happy to address them.
Okay, alright, thank you gentlemen. Are there other members? Jerry, yes, did you?
Is there any reason why we can't skip down to item nine since we just received those comments? And if we went to item nine now, they'd be fresh. And we could also hear a rebuttal from the developers of Lake Stone.
Um, so, so Jerry, we, um, we need to stick to the agenda order tonight for several reasons.
That's fine. I don't need a reason.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have waited till Agenda nine. We thought we were supposed to speak now, so.
Alright, well, we've heard you, we've heard you gentlemen and thank you very much. Okay, so continuing on this community input vein, is there anyone else from the community who would like to bring something to our attention? Alright, thank you. So we will stay on course here. So going on to item number four, public appearances. Uh, item A, this is a follow-up discussion from our December 7th, 2020 Village Board Meeting. Uh, we're gonna have a discussion with Police Chief Pegenkoff and Jamie Bush regarding headquarters. First off is Chief Pegenkoff summary of actions since the December 7th Board Meeting. Uh, so Chief, I'll give the floor to you.
Uh, thank you. And a summary, I apologize, it's gonna be a little longer than a summary. I wanted to be pretty informative with my status update with you guys for a couple of reasons. Number one, there's been some time that's lapsed since we first talked about this. But, uh, two, there, there has been some challenges in working through this. And so I think it's just important. I go through a little bit more detail than I originally had planned. Um, so just to take us back to that last meeting where I, I brought these issues to you guys. That was December 7th at the Village Board Meeting. I brought concerns forward regarding headquarters. These concerns were related to patterns and over-serving individuals along with disturbances occurring at the business. Uh, the Village Board was provided a summary of the context the Oregon Police Department had with headquarters from 2017 to November 25th, 2020. O P D also provided a detailed list of the contacts our liquor liaison had with headquarters staff, including Jamie during this timeframe. Uh, the outcome of the discussion with the Village Board that night was a request to have me work with Jamie to make recommendations and I would provide a status report at a later Village Board meeting. Uh, one of the actions a board member asked be considered was a three-month and six-month timeline to ensure improvements were made quickly. Jamie, Officer Halffield, who is the liquor liaison, and I met uh, the very next day after the Village Board Meeting to get moving on this right away. Uh, we met for approximately an hour. Jamie informed me he had some immediate internal changes he made as a result of the Village Board discussion. Um, and those changes were Jamie immediately ended discounting the sale of alcohol to employees. And this was something he did on his own. Jamie indicated that he had some issues with employees stealing alcohol from him. Therefore, to avoid further thefts, he allowed employees to keep an open tab when drinking at the bar. Jamie has ended that practice as well, uh, the very next day after the Village Board Meeting. Jamie is now closing his business earlier, uh, Monday through Thursday, 10 P M. And at 11 P M. On the weekends. Uh, this will likely end, uh, at some point and headquarters will operate at normal hours of operation. Jamie implemented a new practice for staff to follow when they identify an overly intoxicated person and refuse service. This practice is that the employee will immediately take the drink away from the person and provide them with a free drink token to use on a later date. Jamie created a practice to assist employees in identifying people who arrive at the establishment overly impaired, whether it's drugs and or alcohol. The practice is that the employee will slow down, talk to the patron for a period of time long enough to evaluate if the person is overly impaired. Uh, on that next day after the board meeting, these were some of the immediate actions I took as a police chief under your request to ensure proper communication because I know that was one of the concerns. Uh, Oregon pleading, Oregon Police Department officers, uh, were asked by me to contact me regardless of time of day with any issues at headquarters similar to what was presented to the Village Board. Uh, my plan was then if that occurred to reach out to Jamie immediately so that we could both address the issue at hand. Uh, since the Village Board Meeting on December 7th, we haven't had no issues where I have had to be called, nor have I had to turn around and call Jamie. The Oregon Police Department, um, was to continue to conduct the bar checks of the establishment and notify me and the liquor liaison of any concerns. Uh, no concerns were reported during this evaluation process. During my first meeting with Jamie, again, that was the day after the Village Board Meeting. Jamie brought to light some other matters. He felt the Oregon Police Department failed to keep him informed of issues occurring at headquarters. He was reminded of the context, the liquor liaison who had checked with him throughout the time period when these issues occurred. He felt it was unfair that I spoke of incidents at the Village Board Meeting that occurred off of headquarters premises that he felt were not associated with headquarters. In an effort to work towards accomplishing what the Village Board asked of me, we requested a copy of the headquarters employee handbook. I also later obtained a copy of the policies Jamie had submitted to Village Hall as far as this establishment goes. After completing a thorough review of the employee handbook, village policies, obtaining information from our night shift staff and the liaison, I completed a list of recommendations. It was difficult to establish a three and six month timeline as there were some differences of opinion on what needed to be addressed. To still attempt to accomplish the request of the Village Board Member that made that, I created a list of immediate actions and recommendations. The immediate actions were the ones I discussed earlier. On December 17th, I had a second meeting with Jamie and Officer Halffield to discuss what recommendations I drafted after reviewing all this material for us to discuss further with the purpose of getting any feedback from him before we moved forward. I have made it known in all of my meetings with him that these are just recommendations and I have no authority to require him to use these moving forward. That would be his choice. I did inform him that Officer Hatfield created a log sheet that he could use if he wished to help his staff document to provide assistance in identifying areas of concern to improve safeguards. This was a log that actually prompted the employee to answer very specific questions related to some of the concerns we've seen in the past. The log form encourages staff to document an incident regardless if law enforcement, E M S, or fire is requested. Examples of these incidents include, but are not limited to refusing service, incapacitated subjects, fights, disturbances, requesting a patron leave, et cetera. We felt this may help Jamie with being best informed by his staff versus the Oregon Police Department having to take on that responsibility. During the second meeting, Jamie informed Officer Hatfield that his attorney had told him he should file a lawsuit. On January 12th of 2021, I sent Jamie the recommendations that I created and the log Officer Hatfield had created for his consideration. These recommendations and I, there's a lot of them, um, so I'll just go slow here. The first recommendation, uh, for safety of patrons, exterior doors may not be locked while patrons are inside. A policy should be created in the handbook to address this. Headquarters agrees to maintain video surveillance of all interior, exterior areas of the property where alcohol can be consumed as well as the parking lots on the property. It is suggested that Jamie install cameras to the exterior of the business if he can. Headquarters agrees to retain video for thirty days upon law enforcement's request. The unedited video will be provided within twenty-four hours. Staff shall receive training in the operation of the camera. At a minimum, the bar manager should be able to do this. Employees shall not consume alcohol or illegal drugs anytime while working, including break times. It is stated this way in the policy provided to the village, but it was originally not consistent with the employee handbook. Employee handbook stated in quotes, being intoxicated on a shift. And it would result in immediate termination. However, drugs were not clearly prohibited in the employee book handbook as well. There needs to be a clear line drawn on whether or not it is prohibited on duty and if it should include drugs. The next one, the handbook indicates employees will receive one free shift drink following the completion of their shift. I recommended that this be removed from the handbook and recommend that there be a free item that is not a non-alcoholic item offered. Uh, next one, alcohol, headquarters management will require an employee to conduct an exterior check of the premises to include the outdoor patio, sporting areas and parking lot to ensure that nobody is consuming alcoholic beverages that are carried in. Jamie indicated he believes one of the reasons customers are getting impaired is because they are consuming alcohol in the parking lot and other exterior areas of the business. We felt that this may help end that. Uh, employees shall immediately contact emergency responders if they are made aware or observe any person to be unconscious. In situations where an individual asks for police or E M S, headquarters should call. The next one, employees are empowered to contact law enforcement if an incident occurs on headquarters premise that would compromise the safety of employees or patrons. The next one, employees will be required to document any incidents involving such matters as overly impaired individuals, disturbances, drug-related matters, and other matters that they feel should be communicated to the owner in the logbook. The next one, and headquarters handbook under drinking rules, it states that employees can drink at headquarters. It should be best, it would be best to clarify that this is when they are off duty and does not include during breaks. This one here, employees will be required to attend annual training which will encompass such topics as alcohol or drug impairment, determining that, that customers have met the minimum legal drinking age, de-escalating alcohol-drug related incidents, and when to contact police or emergency responders. Jamie will have to determine what the consequence will be for employees who do not follow these policies. Employees will not be provided discounts to purchase alcohol. Another one, employees will not be allowed to have open tabs of alcohol. Um, it is the responsibility of licensed operators and bar managers on premises to proper, promptly report to Jamie any incidents regardless of law enforcement is requested. Jamie will have to create the wording for a policy that addresses providing a drink token to customers when cutting them off from further sale of alcohol so they can come back at a later time. Jamie will have to find verbiage to address the direction that he has given his staff regarding when a patron enters the establishment to determine whether or not the patron is overly impaired by alcohol and or drugs. If over-serving occurs, the bartender and licensed operator on premises should be held responsible and that should be clear in the handbook. Jamie should provide written direction to the employee in that deploy handbook to his staff on how to deal with an unruly customer. Right now it's, or originally stated in the policy with the village that headquarters will maintain a close and cooperative working relationship with Oregon Police Department. We, I recommended that this be also be added to the employee handbook and that the policy should state all employees of headquarters will fully cooperate with law enforcement, including providing a true and accurate statement of events to officers. Uh, the policy and handbook filed with the Village of Oregon and the handbook provided to staff must be merged into one policy book so that staff can sign off on it and have a, a consistent understanding. And can retain, he can retain a copy for his records. Uh, last recommendation, uh, once the policy has been updated, all staff should be provided a cop, a, a policy book upon being hired and should review and sign off on that. Uh, that concludes the recommendations. Included in the email that I sent to Jamie with the recommendations, I asked Jamie to provide me with information as to what recommendations he would implement, provide a detailed explanation of how he would make that change and how he will enforce the agreed upon recommendations, policies, rules in the handbook. I also asked Jamie what changes he would be making to have more supervision and oversight of headquarters to ensure that we continually see significant improvement in these areas of concern. I felt reporting this information back to the Village Board would help to show what progress we've made. On January 13th of this year, I received an email from Jamie indicating he would update the changes to the employee handbook and send it to us. Uh, one of the recommendations that was made was that he install, um, exterior cameras to the business and he advised that, that would not be something he could do at this time. I, I told him I understood. And my response, response back to this email, I did inform him that I was also looking for what changes he was going to make, uh, regarding the supervision and oversight of headquarters to, so that we could significantly improve in these areas. On January 14th, I received an email back from Jamie regarding the supervision and oversight. Uh, the changes that he indicated he would make where, uh, that he was now, he now had a nightly log he created that is dedicated to patron staff interactions. Each night the log requires an entry by closing, by the closing bartenders. Items included in this log where if a patron entered already intoxicated and was not served, patrons were cut off, conflicts, uh, between patrons, interactions with patrons and cars in the parking lot during sweeps and when staff contacted the Oregon Police Department. Jamie indicated he would then follow up with staff if something happened. It, it appears based off of that, that he's going with his own log and not the one we created, which is fine. Uh, that's certainly his choice. Another change he planned on making for supervision and oversight was meeting with closing bartenders about expectations. Uh, review of new log procedures, answering questions from staff and then conducting the training with Detective Sergeant Jansen, which was scheduled for the 21st. On January 18th, uh, Jamie sent me his updated employee handbook without notations of the changes. Therefore, it was unclear of which recommendations he chose to implement and how. On January 21st, we were able to provide the training to all headquarters staff other than one employee. And it was great to see that it appeared a group from Deeks actually joined the training as well. The training was provided by our Detective Sergeant Jansen, who is certified as a drug recognition expert and standardized field sobriety instructor. Detective Sergeant Jansen created a presentation and provided a one-hour training that addressed such topics as alcohol, drug impairment, determining that customers have met the minimum drinking age, de-escalation regarding alcohol and drug-related incidents and when to contact police and emergency responders and amongst some other things. On January 22nd, I emailed Jamie back informing him that I would not have the time to do a second review of his employee handbook, the revised version this time. I explained to him that I had delayed other work in reviewing his original employee handbook, village policies, meeting with him several times and creating this list of recommendations. I again asked exactly which recommendations were added to the employee handbook. I explained to Jamie that my goals, goal is to get headquarters to a place where this doesn't continue to be an ongoing issue that causes so much police involvement. In prior meetings, Officer Halffield and I had discussed with him the possibilities of Jamie randomly checking the business during the problematic hours or at a minimum randomly reviewing video surveillance from those problematic hours. Um, we were hoping to see that would be one of the things he would move forward on with oversight. I asked him how he will know about incidents where, that are not logged in the, the logbook or when there is a, an issue with a problematic employee or a bar manager. Um, I told him that I, I did not feel the changes he was putting in place for the oversight and supervision that he had provided me were, were enough. Jamie did not respond to my email until after meeting with Attorney Dragney and Mike. That meeting occurred on January 29th. Yesterday, I received an email from Jamie informing that me that he had implemented each of my policy recommendations with the exception of the additional cameras. There's no further information regarding, uh, the oversight or supervision concerns. Yeah, at this point, I, I do want to take a step back and reexamine the concerns Jamie had mentioned earlier. He felt that Oregon Police Department failed to keep him informed of any issues occurring with headquarters. He was reminded of the context the liquor liaison has had with him throughout, uh, this time period where these issues occurred. Officer Halffield and I repeatedly told Jamie that is not the responsibility of the Oregon Police Department to report incidents to him regarding headquarters. This is his business and this is his responsibility of knowing what occurs at his business and the employees who work for him. Uh, the Oregon Police Department repeatedly informed him of matters over the last three years through the liquor liaison program and have tried to work with him. And the village, and you have been provided that information of what content, uh, we've discussed through our liquor liaison program in that first meeting. Uh, the other concern that's been brought up is he felt it was unfair that I, I spoke of these incidents at the Village Board Meeting that occurred off of headquarters premises that he felt were not associated with headquarters. Uh, this, during the December meeting, I provided the Village Board with a factual summary containing details collected from police reports about cases that either happened at headquarters or were connected to headquarters. The information in our police reports contains statements from individuals involved, evidence and officers' observations. I felt it was important to bring both types of cases to the Village Board's attention because there is clearly a pattern here. At this point, we've exhausted all recommendations for the issues we have identified at this time. I have provided recommendations for Jamie to consider. As requested by the Village Board, I've continued to have open communication with Jamie and remain very transparent with my recommendations. Moving forward, this will conclude our assistance with headquarters regarding the ongoing issues. We will now assume the same relationship with headquarters that we have had with other businesses in the village. If Jamie needs assistance in the future, he will need to reach out to us. And if he is interested in police contacts or associate, or associated with his business, he should complete an opens records request and we will be happy to facilitate that request. Businesses reach out to us when they are interested in assistance with training. It will be Jamie's responsibility to reach out with that request, but again, we would be certainly happy to accommodate. This practice is consistent with how the liquor liaisons work throughout any other business. At this point, the Oregon Police Department will not be assuming any responsibility for the operations of headquarters moving forward. This is now up to Jamie to move forward and he is welcome to reach out to us with questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for Chief Paganco? Right now? All right, Jamie, Jamie, I see that you're at the meeting. Did you want to make any, any brief remarks?
No, I, I guess I'm just looking forward to trying to continue doing what we've done and make these adjustments and look at twenty twenty one as a positive and we've been, I, I didn't annotate because I had done all of her requests, so I didn't specifically pull them aside, but we're looking forward to moving forward successfully in the future.
All right, thank you. Board, board members, any comments, questions right now? Chief, it seems like you've, you've worked quite a bit on this project. We appreciate that, you and your team. For me personally, as a board member, it's, it's always preferable to try to work with the business owner instead of immediately moving to sort of to punitive actions. So I'm glad that we, that you've, that we went through this process. Those are my thoughts.
Yes, I, this, so this was a, this is a very difficult and this was a first for me. It's created a lot of challenges because you're walking a fine line. I am, this is why I like, I love serving this community is it's all about supporting and helping our community, including our business owners. But we, I wavered, it felt like I wavered at times and I don't want to be the type of person that is considered one that's trying to come in and run a business. That was in no way my intention. So I think moving forward, that is something to consider is when we're, we're doing this, how many recommendations we should give and how deep we should really get into this. But I do wish Jamie the best of luck. And I certainly learned from this experience as well.
Well, and I appreciate that. I think the board gave you direction to make some recommendations. And I, and I, for me personally, I don't think we're expecting you to go further than this. It's, you know, it's headquarters and Mr. Bush's decisions of how to implement your recommendations and whether or not to implement them and how he moves forward. And I feel like at this point, we've, we've advised as much as possibly we can. And it sounds like Jamie, you're, you're happy to start a new page and hopefully all will go well. And I, I get the feeling though that if it, if it doesn't go well, punitive actions may, may follow because we've, we've sort of hit the end of that recommendation level. I don't, board members, is that sort of what you're hearing? That's what I'm hearing.
Exactly.
Yeah, go ahead, Manda.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm encouraged that there haven't been any further calls since you guys started talking about this. I'm taking that as a good sign that, that maybe these changes are having the intended effect. So I'm gonna, I would move forward on that positive note and just say, you know, like, let's keep that up. I, and you know, it seems like these are good changes. So, and I appreciate Mr. Bush working with the chief and implementing most if not all of those changes.
All right. Yes, go ahead, Randy.
So I just want to thank, thank first, thank the chief for coming up and I know I, I kind of been emailing both, both of them, trying to stay positive, work together, sort of get this thing resolved. And I just want to thank the chief for putting out some, I, I'm assuming is a great recommendations for Jamie. And also want to thank Jamie for accepting those recommendations. Because I think all of us on the board want to, want to see Jamie and headquarters succeed and be successful. So, so thank you to both, both of you for sort of listening to each other. The chief for, for recommending some good things and Jamie for being willing to accept and make some changes for the better.
Very good. All right, there's nothing further. We will keep going. Anything else, Jamie? From your, from your end. All right, we, Jamie, we appreciate you being here tonight. I sympathize with you as, as a business owner, stuff like this is not fun to go through. I appreciate how professional that you've been in our meetings and we look, we look forward to working with headquarters in the future. I know we've, we've got some, we're interviewing, are we interviewing village administrator candidates at your place in a, in a few weeks? So we look, we look forward to keep you in business with you, dude. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, chief. All right. So we will keep marching on here. Approval of minutes, we don't have any. Approval of vouchers, do we have, I think there's vouchers in the packet there, aren't there?
Yeah. It doesn't air on the agenda, sorry.
That's okay. So we, so we have vouchers tonight in the total of nine hundred sixty two thousand four hundred eighty dollars and sixty eight cents. Would someone like to make a motion on the table to approve those?
Jamie, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve.
All right. So we have a motion by Kalish, second by Jacobson. All right, what questions do we have on vouchers tonight? All right, yes, Balog.
Yes, thank you. Vendor number six eight eight zero to pay cash. Their description, their bills, friends, Y S programming. What I, it's not very clear as to what it is.
Jerry, I believe that was probably the library expense. I think, I can look up more specifically what those items were, but it'd be small purchases under twenty dollars from bills. The friends items are paid for by the friends. So the village just asks, acts as a pass through. And then Y S would be programming. I don't have that in front of me, but if, if the information would be helpful, I'm happy to get that for you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Number eight thousand. There's sewer service on the furnace. It was for four thousand two hundred dollars. What, is there something major going on with the furnace? And where is it? Which furnace?
That was, I think that was a buildings, building twenty furnace that was replaced. I think that was a previously approved item that just came through.
I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? All right, then I would ask for a rule called vote, please.
Stitch?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Balog?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item seven, proclamations and announcements. First, we have board comments. Any board comments tonight? Yes, Mr. Horton?
I'm sad to announce that this will probably be my last village board meeting as a trustee because I am in the process of moving and I'll close on my house mid February here. So this will be my last meeting with you all. I just wanted to say thank you all for being such a good team, working together and in the interests of the village and it's been a lot of fun and a lot of just great experience, kind of seeing how everything works and just being a part of making decisions for the people. So thank you and I encourage everyone, if you haven't gotten involved with your local government, do so. It's, it's a lot of fun and it's rewarding. So thank you all and I'll miss you, but I'll be around.
And good luck. Good luck, Cory.
Thank you.
Yes, Cory, thank you for your service on the board. We appreciate it. I, I don't know if the public has a accurate view of how much time and effort we put into this job. But it's, you, you've always put the time and effort into it. So I, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cory, I just wanted to say too, I've always appreciated the good questions that you asked. I always learn stuff from it. You, you always think to ask something that I didn't think of. So I'll, I'll miss you on the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sometimes I feel like I ask way too many questions. So that makes me feel a little better.
Good.
All right, additional board comments tonight. All right, we'll keep going. Staff comments, we have several upcoming meetings on there. The, the February fifteenth meeting is going to be on a upcoming agenda item here. So we'll discuss that in a minute. Mike, anything that you want to hit on there specifically?
I think I'll wait till number eight. We can kind of talk. Yeah, thank you.
All right. So board members, just make sure all those dates are on your calendars. Oh, and the only thing I would say, make sure that, that Tuesday, April twentieth meeting is on your calendar. That organizational board meeting, it's on a Tuesday and that one always took me by surprise. So. All right. So then we'll keep going to eight communications and miscellaneous business. First item is a status of the village administrator search. Mike, do you, do you want to take this or do you want me just to read some of these things or how would you like to handle this one?
You can read them and I'll jump in if you, yeah.
Okay. Can you remind me what the survey is that this first bullet point is?
Yeah, I mean, this sort of came, laid in the, the search or selection process and, and when this is, this is this company that does community surveys. They, they've actually done a presentation to us a couple of years ago and the board said, not at this point, we didn't, we weren't interested. And so this company that was founded in Whitewater where Kevin used to be the city administrator, the executive director approached Kevin and Kevin thought, well, maybe we should, we could do that. But then it was right. I think we're too far into the, into the search process to, to, to do it. So he, he and I, actually he talked to the executive director from Polk and he said, they just felt it was too late to, to do it as part of us, but they'll probably think about doing it when they do other searches in the future, but they thought it was too late for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's that first bullet point. Yes, Jenna?
So it was my understanding we were going to use Polk as a way to get community feedback on, on the village administrator role and candidates. Is there, have we talked about other ways to potentially do that?
I could, I could add that to the February, remember, remember we meet with Kevin and I can get my heads up if you want to talk about that, Jenna. Sure.
All right. So then the next bullet point on there is rescheduling the February fifteenth board meeting to February seventeenth or eighteenth. At this meeting, the board will, in addition to reviewing the mini resumes and closed session, review and discuss the following with Kevin. So we'll review the draft job description, the draft employment agreement, possibly forward that to the village attorney for review. We'll discuss the assessment process for interviews, including possible writing exercise and tours of the community. And oh, as I alluded to earlier, the banquet room at headquarters has been reserved from eight AM to eight PM on March twelfth. We will discuss the village administrators and department heads involvement in the selection process. We'll discuss the background process for the, for the finalists. Chief Paganco has let us know that Verona's Police Department will conduct that background check for us. We appreciate that. The village administrator's new retirement date is Monday, May third, twenty twenty one. This will allow Mike to help the new village president and board members get through that April twentieth special organizational board meeting and also prepare the agenda packet for the first regular board meeting on May third. All right. So are you looking, let's first, let's see if we can find a date.
Yeah.
We can take it up for the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have a preferred date that?
It, it looks like after talking to Jerry Balog this morning, that the only one date that will work for Jerry, if I can speak for Jerry, is the seventeenth. So that's fine with me. Kevin was available the sixteen, seventeenth and eighteenth. I don't want to do it on, on election day. So I would, if everyone can do it, I'd just do it on that Wednesday.
How does Wednesday, February seventeenth work for people? Are we thinking this would be five o'clock, Mike?
Five o'clock. Yep. We just moved a meeting, meeting from the fifteen to the seventeen. Yeah.
All right. I've not seen any disagreement here.
Good. Thank you for that.
Do you, do you want to just send out an email or something to us reminding us of that?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you for accommodating me.
Anytime, Jerry.
I was going to say something I didn't.
I think that I sensed a tone there that said a lot, so.
Well, well, to be, to be fair, we're not rescheduling because of Jerry, we're scheduling because of conflicts with the consultant, but we, we would have rescheduled it just for you, Jerry, to be clear.
I, I would hope not.
All right. So we're going to have a lot to do at that meeting.
And, and Jeannie, could I talk about the one item that, actually two items on, on that list that you went through?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so the first one is, and this is, you know, this would not be an issue if COVID was not around. I mean, a lot of, I can say it for a lot of things. I am just very nervous about having me and a candidate or department head and a candidate get in a vehicle to do a tour of the community. I, I, I just, you know, it's going to only be mid-March. And so I thought about this over the weekend and I think, I think we could ask Elise Jeff to do this using Google Earth to do a, a virtual tour. I, I guess I'm going to lean, I'm going to suggest that to Kevin and to the board that we do that versus doing personal tours. I mentioned to Jeannie that whenever I applied for a job, I used to always with my wife tour the community before the interview anyways. So I, I'm just not comfortable exposing the candidate or my, our staff or myself to, to the virus just to give somebody a tour. So that's, that's going to be a recommendation on on giving tours. So just so you know, and I'll, I'll talk to Kevin about that as well.
Oh, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, I, that's a great recommendation, Mike, and I, I hope everybody takes advantage of that. I hope we do virtual for your sake, for the staff's sake. And on that note, you, you mentioned earlier that we're going to meet at headquarters.
And so Candy and I were trying to find the largest room that's available to meet. And, and we feel that we can space out, which now would be the six of you in the room and put the candidate up on the stage with the, and then with, with Kevin in the room. That's, that only, there'll only be like eight people in that large room. I, I think it'll be okay. It'd be better than meeting in the boardroom. We were trying to figure out how to do in the boardroom. That'd be tricky because it's so narrow. This way we can, we can like do a half circle.
So we, we can't do that meeting virtually?
Well.
I, I actually, I for me to hire a village administrator, I need to meet the person in person.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Otherwise, well, it might, I mean, you, you have to meet people and people to hire them. You just, you just have to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's see, Amanda then Jenna.
Yeah, I'm with you face to face, I think is important for that. Jeannie, but the suggestion I had is that we enlist the help of OCA media for a community tour. That'd be something where you could get someone who works or is in charge of each place to take a virtual tour inside the buildings, not just a a drone kind of outside lay of the land kind of tour. And, you know, some of the Oregon minutes or something may cover that. Maybe we could just put together a string of videos to help familiarize the candidates with our community. It's just a thought.
Yeah, we could definitely, because Frank did that whole series of Oregon minutes with different businesses. We could just send the links to that. That'd be great. And they're, yeah, they're like ninety seconds. Yeah, Jenna, did you have a thought?
I was just wondering if there was, oh, you know, for, for those who want to be in the room to have the face to face interview, we have headquarters, but is there a way to accommodate anybody who might not be comfortable with, with doing that so that they can also participate? Having a Zoom link or something for them?
Um, I, I'd have to think about to talk to our Zoom master about that, Elise, is she?
Just something to consider.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. If you don't, I guess you're not comfortable being in the room then. Okay, that's a good, good question. Yeah, 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 that's true. If you don't, I guess you're not comfortable being in the room then, okay, that's a good, good question, Jenna, so I didn't think of that, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, let's maybe see if we can figure something out. I know in the past that it's been hard to do that hybrid model, but I don't know.
Hey Mike, can, this is Matt, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, sure.
What about the public? Uh, is this anticipated as a closed session?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
These are interviews?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna notice it's a call session, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, you know if there's a sound system in headquarters with microphones, if you all are gonna be kinda separated with masks on?
I believe there is.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Just thinking, there might be a way to tie in a computer to that. We can, I can work with Candy to see if we can maybe go over to headquarters and take a look at that, because that would make it easier to pick up all the voices. That's usually the hardest part.
They have TV screens too, because it's a sports bar, so you can, you know, they have like displays there. If that helps.
Elise, we, um, we have our rotary meetings there, what we used to. Um, all of our rotary means are now virtual, but, um, so I'm a little bit familiar with their sound system, but they only have one microphone, just to let you know.
Okay, well, maybe we'll maybe there should be a date if somebody does not feel comfortable meeting in person, or maybe just have a backup plan in case somebody isn't feeling well, but would still like to participate.
Good point.
It'd be good to know though, if there's a couple of people that are interested in doing that remotely, and then we can accommodate.
Yeah, you're right, if, if somebody's having to be quarantined, not that they're sick, but their family member, that, that's true. That's, that's, that's a great question, Jenna, thank you for bringing it up.
Could we, could we record it? And then, um, I mean, board members would not be able to participate then, but if they could at least watch it later.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to work on that, we have some time, thank you. Sorry, Amanda, cut you off there.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, Jeff, you have that fancy new portable sound system, we could bring that too.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's on, uh, Feb-
March twelfth.
That's the March one, okay.
Yeah, we've, we've got time. The February seventeenth one's gonna be still Zoom with, with Kevin.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I totally get the concern, I, I mean, I'm not doing anything in person either, um, but I've, I've just, I've hired, I've helped hire so many people through the village, and people look so different on the screen than in person. I, I mean, like, I'm not gonna like, you know, say who, what position it was for, but, uh, I remember thinking we were all in agreement that we were gonna hire this person when we did like the, the, like the Skype, I think we did via Skype.
Yes, Skype, yeah.
And then we brought them all in for the final interviews, and I remember being like, oh, because they were just, the person was so different in person than they were on the screen.
Yeah.
And I remember thinking, dodged a bullet with that one. So not talking about you, Jeff, don't worry. All right, so we will try to figure out that March process.
Yeah.
Um, what, and then as I say, um, I, I would like to have department heads involved here at some point. Can, can he be involved in that March, that March meeting?
That, so, so I, I understand, and let me tell you what, why Kevin is saying that they should not be involved, his recommendation not to be involved in the, the mini resume thing, because, um, he gave me an example where somebody maybe has something in their background ten years ago. And, and he, he's not gonna feel comfortable talking about that in front of department heads, who, this person couldn't have been their new boss, and, and so I get that. But, but the more I thought about it, I thought, since the, the department heads are going to, um, meet the finalists on March twelfth, so, and, and probably not, maybe not interview, but have a discussion with them, that maybe they should, and this is up to the board, obviously. And maybe something to talk to Kevin about, maybe they should sit in on that, at that, uh, March first board meeting to look at, to watch the videos of the, of the twelve semifinalists, or ten semifinalists.
I mean, I guess, I guess I would have no problem with that. Does any other board member have an issue with department heads? Especially if we have a Zoom option where folks can be sitting at their desk and kind of watching that process. You're, are you thinking department heads wouldn't necessarily be asking questions, they would just be?
Observing, observing, yeah, to be the board, the board make it the selection, but that way they would have seen the video, and, and honestly, listen to your comments about the candidates too. It's up to you, I know Kevin would say that typically the department heads would see the four videos that are selected for the, for finalist, so, I mean, that may be something you have to talk to him about, but I actually think, I think there's a benefit, uh, of having the department heads in, in that meeting, since I think you're gonna be looking for some feedback from them on the candidates, I believe, yeah, yeah, Jenna's going, yeah.
Anyone opposed to that, or?
No.
Looks like everybody thinks that that's an okay idea.
Okay. So I think that is that's it, and as, so as of today, my retirement day is May third, subject to maybe changing again, we'll never know, will we? I'm gone. And my wife's, my wife's enjoying this, so just, you know. And a couple of department heads are enjoying it too, so it, it's good for something.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, Mike, we appreciate your flexibility and, and sticking with us through this process, because COVID is not making anything easier.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I talked to a couple of board members, I could, I got the, the feeling or the message, they would like me to stay a little bit longer to get them through that organizational meeting, so a couple of weeks, it's not a big deal.
About the budget too.
I know, I keep saying a couple of weeks, I'll, I'll be halfway to the summer, I keep saying that, right?
I heard May third of twenty-two, is that?
Yeah, but somebody already said that, thank you, Jen.
Change that one little number, does it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, a little typo, yeah, right. Now, I think, I think you're gonna be impressed with the candidates. This is a, this is a fantastic job and fantastic, you know, fantastic community, so we'll, we'll get some good candidates, I'm, I'm confident in that.
All right. Everybody okay with that agenda item, moving here, okay?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, um, next item is item B, says the status of the Autumn Ridge Capital Area Regional Planning Commission with the catchy acronym of CARPSY, so middle of, um, Autumn Ri- Ridge Phases Two and Three. Um, this was originally scheduled for February eleventh, is this the one that we're, now we're now tabling until further, okay?
Yeah, Je- Jeannie, we had a, uh, a, a meeting in front of the Town of Oregon's Planning Commission, and we, we determined, uh, during that meeting that the developer doesn't have all his stormwater calculations and, and studies completed, so we just, we pulled the, the CARPSY hearing. And, uh, so it, it will not go back on any agenda until, I, I keep saying until Jeff, Jeff Rau is satisfied that the stormwater is okay, it will not go on any agenda until then.
That sounds reasonable.
Yep.
All right, then item C is a discussion and possible action regarding updating the village's social horse, host ordinance. We have recommended motion to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary ordinance to update the village's social host ordinance. All right, Mike, do you wanna talk about this, or Matt?
I'll let Matt, please.
Okay.
Um, I can provide some background, um, so the, the, there's a fair amount of history here. The village adopted a social, social host ordinance originally quite a few years ago now, I, I don't remember specifically the year. I think it was maybe two thousand and twelve. And, uh, after that ordinance was adopted, there was a case that came down that basically, uh, invalidated the village's ordinance. It wasn't our case, it was another community had a similar ordinance, and it basically invalidated social host ordinances across the state. Uh, after that, uh, the state amended the statute to provide for a statutory, essentially a statutory social host type regulation. And recently, uh, there was a situation involving a, I think a case pending in the municipal court in the village that raised a question about whether the village's social host ordinance is in conformity with state law, and in particular, as it relates to juveniles as the, whether a juvenile can be prosecuted for violating the, the, uh, the ordinance as a, as a host. And I reviewed, uh, the current ordinance and the statute and came to the conclusion that our ordinance is out of step with the statute. Um, certainly with respect to this juvenile issue, and frankly, potentially other issues, because the language is just different. So my recommendation is that, um, the board don't direct me to essentially amend our, uh, our social host ordinance, and my intent was be to essentially adopt the statute verbatim, so we don't have any, because we're, we're really required by law, by state law to follow the state on this issue. So that's it.
Board members' questions on this? All right, would someone like to make a motion then to direct the village attorney to prepare that, uh, that update? Thank you, so a motion by Stitch and a second by Jacobson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for that. I think Beth Cox will also thank us for that, it's gonna hopefully make her life a little easier as municipal judge. All right, um, let's see, all right, so more housekeeping, item D. Uh, this is the discussion, the possible action regarding ordinance number twenty-one oh one. This, um, is amending section one point three one. Current two of the village code of the ordinance is relating to the terms of the Office of Park Board Members. And so this, um, in the original ordinance, uh, all of their terms expire in January, and so now we're pushing them back to April, so that it matches all the other committees' uh, term endings. So, first, a possible motion to consider, the board by two-thirds vote, the board members may suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
So move, Jeannie.
Thank you, so a motion by Glish, is there a second?
Peterson.
Second by Peterson, thank you. Any discussion on this? For the public watching, this just allows us not to, um, go through multiple readings of that ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, and then this is the second motion, since we have chosen to suspend the rules, we not, may now, uh, consider adopting ordinance, uh, number twenty-one oh one. Someone like to make that motion, please? All right, so, uh, motion by Glish, second by Balig, any discussion on this one? All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, all right. Thank you for catching that, staff, and now every, now all committee terms will end at the same time.
Yep.
That will make life a little bit easier. All right, item E, this is discussion and possible action regarding, um, a lease agreement between the Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce and the Village of Oregon for a term of January first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Um, I know in the past we've had longer, um, lease agreements, but, um, I think we're doing it for a year, because the location of the village hall is a, a little open air right now. So, uh, winning, and I, I should, I should just say, it's my personal preference that wherever the village hall moves, that hopefully the chamber will have room to lease space from us, or have some room, like. If anyone is wondering why we're doing this for just a year, would anyone like to make that motion to approve that lease agreement for two thousand twenty-one? Thank you, so a motion by Jacobson, second by Glish. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right. Item F, this is the COVID nineteen update. Um, first is the discussion and possible action regarding COVID nineteen village administrator's recommendation regarding allowing village employees to get vaccinated on work time if appointments become available. Um, so we have a recommended motion to approve that recommendation. Would someone like to make that motion?
Jacobson will make the motion.
All right, so a motion by Jacobson, second by Stitch. Mike, do you wanna say anything on this?
I, I just think it's important that, I think we all know with the, uh, the craziness we're having with getting people vaccinated, that if, if you're at work and you get a call, and you have the opportunity to get vaccinated, I, I told, this actually started with the police department, I told Jenny, let officer go, even if they're on duty, we, we want people getting vaccinated, I didn't wanna hold them up and have this, this, you know, debate, uh, the on-duty, off-duty, just get vaccinated, so I thought that was the thing to do.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. And then we have a status of mask mandate on here, but, um, it's still a mandate as of today from the state of Wisconsin and from the Dane County.
Right.
The legislature is still trying to fare it what they wanna do, uh, but Dane County, it doesn't matter, because the Dane County Public Health Department tells us what to do.
Yep.
So put your masks on, people. That's my status, and I, that's a nice, nice Jeff. That's my mask status for the evening. All right. Uh, item G, uh, discussion and possible action regarding the Staley Plumbing Annual Contract. We have a recommended motion to approve that maintenance, the HVAC maintenance contract with Staley Plumbing and Heating in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars billed monthly at one thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars per their proposal dated July twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Would someone like to make that motion to get on the table? Motion by Balig, second by Peterson. Um, questions on this? Go ahead, Randy.
I asked Mike this, this morning, and maybe he's gonna answer. Is, is the pump house stuff included?
Is, I confirmed that with Scott Staley today, Randy.
All right, good, we'll keep that in good shape.
Tin man pump house.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yes, Amanda.
Yeah, I just, uh, noticed in the, this daily contract that's in the packet that it still includes the police department HVAC, uh, cottonwood seed removal, like it's, it was still listed in the, the, what's covered. I just wanted to point that out, I mean, I know, you know, we may have an arrangement that takes it out, but it's still listed in there.
Where are you seeing that?
That's number, that's for Public Works.
Yeah, where is it? I did see it, it's in there. Oh, cut, uh, number five, rinse cottonwood seeds from public, oh, it is Public Works, that police department. Good call, sorry. Missed that.
My apologies, and normally I bring this to you guys in late fall, um, after I get all the budget numbers from Scott, and, uh, he called me the other day and said, I never got a copy of that, and I said, well, there's probably a reason for that, so.
I thought this was dated, dated a little bit a while ago there, Jeff.
Well, I started right away with the apology that this was an oversight on my part. So, uh, but, uh, yeah, no, and I will say Staley, Staley Plumbing has done a great job with the village, and, and they're very responsive to everything. This is their preventive maintenance that they do all the time, and a lion's share of it is, is wastewater, which are some very big systems over there, so.
Question, oh, yes, Jerry.
Yes, uh, and I, I know, uh, Jeff is very, very happy with the work that Staley does. Next contract, would we be able to have a couple other, other vendors bid on this? Just to, just so we know that, that, uh, the price is in line.
Yeah, I'll put something in, um, put something in for when we go through budget season this next year.
That'd be perfect, Jeff, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further comments or questions on this one? All right, so we have a motion in the second then to approve this maintenance contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item H, uh, this is a informational item, the mass and beltline planning and environmental linkages corridor study. Uh, Jeff Rau and Elise Cruz will serve on the technical advisory committee and the policy advisory committee. Thank you to the two of you for doing that. We've, we've been on that study for a while, or we've been in, in that group for a little while.
Yep.
Yes, so thank you, Jeff and Elise, for being on that, representing Oregon, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, then item I, uh, this is a discussion and possible action regarding ordinance twenty-one oh two. This is an ordinance three- Uh this is a discussion on possible action regarding ordinance twenty one oh two. This is an ordinance repealing section fourteen point one five and repealing and recreating section fourteen point four five of the village code of ordinances relating to raising buildings. All right, so um we've talked about this in a couple previous meetings and it looks like Matt has cleaned up this ordinance for us. So the first motion that we'll do is by two thirds vote to the board. Uh we may suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. Does anyone feel so inclined to make that motion? Motion by Peterson, thank you, and a second by Glish. Uh any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then the second uh motion is now that we've chosen to suspend the rules, um would someone like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty one oh two? Motion by, um yes, thank you, motion by Peterson, second by Horton. Um any questions on this? And um you want Matt to kind of go through it, but I've, I would think you just have questions, you could answer them. Again, more, more housekeeping things. Thank you, Matt, for helping us keep our ordinances up to date. We appreciate that. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so now we're on to nine reported committees, planning commission. These are all from the January fourteenth twenty twenty one meeting. Um first item is we have a discussion on possible action regarding approval of a conditional use permit submitted by the Wine Reserve LLC for indoor and outdoor, outdoor commercial entertainment at one one three North Main Street. And so just to recap what the planning commission is bringing forward to you. Mozon moved second by Beno to recommend the approval of the CUP. Um and that motion is brought to unanimously seven zero. So I will bring that motion, since I'm on the plan commission, I'll bring that motion forward here. Uh I would make a motion that we approve the conditional u- use uh permit for to um by the Wine Reserve LLC for indoor and outdoor commercial entertainment at one thirteen North Main Street. Is there a second? Second by Jacobson, thank you. And it looks like we have the um the applicant on the call. If folks have questions. Um I will tell you that um the planning commission um put, put these guys through their paces. Um in the packet, there's um some good information in there. Um. If anyone has questions, I might be able to answer them too as at the meeting. I don't know, I'm, I'm excited about walking across the street and drinking a glass of wine after work. Just gonna put that out there. Wouldn't it be nice in warmer weather to be able to sit outside on a patio and drink a glass of wine and maybe they'll have one of those mosquito machines. No pressure, Todd, but if you can have one of those mosquito machines that keeps the bugs away. Greatly enhance my experience. Any que- any questions on that?
He wouldn't be able to get me to leave.
I should have put that in the motion at the plan commission. They have to have a mosquito machine. Man, I missed my opportunity. All right, so any questions on this one? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So Todd, you sat through that entire meeting. Thank you very much appreciated. Looking forward to um more, more to come. It's been fun. I own the business across the street. It's been fun watching Todd work on his business at night while uh you, Ryan, I are remodeling our business across the street. So sometimes we wave. It's, it's nice to see think good things happening downtown. Okay, all right, and then this next item is number two. This is what we had the gentleman talking about with us um previously. Thank you guys for being here. So this is the discussion of the possible action um regarding, well, this is, this is actually a little bit different. Yeah, the first one is a certified survey map, so we'll, we'll do this first. So this is um approving a certified survey map for uh lots nine seventeen, nine nineteen, nine forty seven, nine fifty seven, Jamesville Street. This is for the Lake Stone um properties with the affordable um multifamily housing project. Um this um is approving the certified survey map for all of those properties. And this is something that as we go through the process is important um for the next, next step that we'll be talking about. I should mention that the planning commission made um the approval of the CSM contingent upon meeting the recommendation from the village planner and then zoning administrator in the memo dated January seventh twenty twenty one, and that motion comes to us unanimously. So I'll bring this motion to the village board for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bollig. All right, so again, this, this is just um approving the certified survey map, which is the legal ease um for putting these lots together for development. Any questions on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and then this, this is the item that the um uh Mr. Keller and Mr. Gilena spoke to us earlier. So this is on discussion of possible action regarding the specific implementation plan um for the, those lots nine seventeen, nine nineteen, nine forty seven, nine fifty seven, Jamesville Street. Um again, this is for the Lake Stone Properties Affordable Multifamily Housing Project. Um and so the planning commission um motion comes to you, I move second by Beno to recommend to the village board um to approve this SIP. Um and to include the village planner's recommendations noted in the memo dating January seventh twenty twenty one. So I, I'll bring this motion um to the board if someone wants to second it and then we can discuss. So I'll bring the motion. Is there a second? Second by Glish, thank you. Okay. Um I'm not sure if uh how many of you, and I, we had the joint um village board meeting and planning commission meeting for the presentation on the West Side Park. And I know a lot of you stayed for this, but I'm not sure if everyone did. And so I'll, I'll, I'll just by, I'll just preface this by saying that um one of the um things I was um impressed by was how the planning commission um and the applicant um and, and Galena Properties, the Pine Cove Apartments. I, I mean, I know that they're not super happy with this um this sort of uh agreement, but one of the things that Mike Slavney actually brought forth was um to install and, and the planning commission often does this because the planning commission um in your village does not believe in fences. And because fences look really good, the first they go up, they go up and then they don't. So the planning commission in this village is very um supportive of landscaping buffering. And um I know in the motion that I made, um it included this um recommendation from Mike Slavney to, to plant some pretty serious evergreens between these two properties because um as we've heard from the, the two gentlemen earlier, they're very concerned about the proximity of that one building to their apartment building, even though it, it meets the sixty foot um setback rule. Um but you know, who wants to look outside their window and look at another building, right? That's pretty much what it comes down to. So um I know that the folks at Lake Stone um agreed to plant, plant those trees. In addition, they agreed to move that building another ten feet um to, to try to mitigate the concerns brought forward by the two, the two gentleman that spoke um during the public comment. So um it was, you know, we had some good discussion at planning. Um of many of you were there and I think that um Chair Greg Schenelli sort of summed it up that, you know, the, the applicant has met all of the requirements. They've met all the setback requirements that are put into our ordinances. And they've gone even above and beyond a little bit with these two additional um ideas. So um obviously I made the motion to, to approve this to the village board, um and it looks like the applicant is here. Thank, hi Brett. Um if folks have, have questions for Brett on this. Yes, Mr. Glitch.
So, so I wrote down a couple of things at the app, the folks, um the Pinecone folks are just talked about the fire code. Can we have somebody, they, they, they mentioned the fire code, the MRA, the scale of development, and they mentioned the C store, but my understanding is that's, that's sort of not on the table, but that's a future sort of thing. If, if I, if I remember correctly, but can we, we have somebody, they, they mentioned the fire code and the other one?
Yeah, we can, we can work through those three things. Elise, do you want to maybe um talk about the, the village, like the fire code? Or if one of the other applicants want to talk about it?
Sure, I'll, I'll start and maybe make an attempt to address all three of those things and then allow Brett, Brian and Ryan Quam, their engineer, to chime in and, and add in a little bit um with regards to the fire code. So I do know that um Kurt Keller did reach out to our fire chief, Glenn Lenzmeyer about two weeks ago and believe that they were able to connect last week, I spoke with the chief this afternoon. Um just to clarify if there were any outstanding concerns or comments that he had and you know, as part of our all of our SIP site plan reviews, we share those site plans with the fire department and actually because this Lake Stone project has been in development for so many months. The fire department has had a chance to see this many times, provided comments, things were adjusted and um the fire chief feels that with the kind of where things are left, they were able to get everything they could out of the site in terms of usability and safety. Um all of these buildings will be sprinkled. There's also an addition of some in indoor stand pipes to connect to um where the hydrants might be a bit of a distance to some of the units. So you know, the applicant has worked with the fire chief, and I know some of those things are difficult to see on the plan, um but at the always as of this afternoon, the fire chief has no um concerns. He feels comfortable with where things have been left in terms of the
At least we're good there on that one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um with regards to the building seal, you know, while this this is a planned development site, um planned development zoning with MRA to sort of the underlying zoning district, so that's what we use to build, build upon and request flexibilities for height, density, um whatever the case may be. So while the intent of the MRA multifamily zoning district is to have buildings that are within scale to the neighborhood, that's the intent of all of our zoning districts. Um you know, we do have three story buildings with underground parking elsewhere in the village next to one and two story buildings and uh you know, again, Mike Slavney, myself, the planning commission, we've all seen this many times and I think um while the topography is a little different, they've, they've done their best to make good use of the site and um you know, don't feel that it's going to be grievously out of place with, with the neighborhood there. Um so there hasn't been a, a concern that's been brought up, at least by the planning commission. Again, then just with regards to the gas station. Now, we've mentioned this to you all several times. It is, you know, used as a placeholder and sort of as a, you know, potential use there. It did, I know, drive a little bit of how the, the CSM was drawn to allow a use like this or perhaps a restaurant or an office building, medical office building, something like that. So it's sort of a not worst case scenario, but uh the most intense use and probably largest use that's envisioned on that site. Um it's again, just kind of there to show how access to the site would work cross easements in terms of turning in and out at Wolf Street and, and um further east on Jamesville Street. Um we know that there will be a lot of specific things to look at if it does indeed appear that a gas station user is interested in the site in terms of lighting, noise, visibility, screening. Um and that's definitely something we'll go through more with a fine tooth comb if that does become the case later on.
So, so at least just to follow up that, that, that part, that'll have to all come back and get approved and all that sort of stuff, right?
Sure. Yeah, so the SIP, you can kind of imagine, it's really just in relation to, there's a red line here, it's sort of on relation to what would be the multifamily parcel. This again is just shown as to understand how the site works, could work together um as a whole for whatever commercial use that ends up being.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Elise, for addressing those.
I will just address to um Joe Galena's comment about concept C he referenced. There was a conceptual design shown on the observer and shared with the board, the planning commission probably back in June. And that was done um you know, as a planning exercise. That wasn't done with any engineering um stormwater calculations behind it. So it was sort of this meant to show scale of what was potentially able to be built on the the site, but as they got into the site, understanding topography and um where these ponds needed to go did kind of dictate where those buildings were able to be laid out.
Thank you.
Other board members questions? Comments? Yes, Amanda, go ahead.
Uh yeah, I had a question. Um are, is uh or is, are there still plans to possibly designate one of these buildings for um seniors to live in?
Um I, I want to say yes, but I can put the applicants, yeah, go ahead, Brett.
Sure, yeah, yeah, thanks. Uh good question. Yeah, as we uh continue to work through the process with WIDA. Um we are designating building one for a, a senior fifty five and older building. Um it's not going to be deed restricted, but it's going to, we're building, basically constructing everything within the building that fifty five and older residents would want. Handrails, automatic door openings, walk-in showers. Um and we're marketing towards seniors. For some reason, if, you know, we're kind of internally saying, you know, if this doesn't lease up like we all think it will after, a year after opening, then we might have to revisit it, but uh we are marketing it, we're building it for seniors and we think it's going to fill up um pretty quick. So does that answer your question?
Uh it does, yeah, there um I, I know that uh some constituents have been asking about that and uh wondering about what all it would include. Uh so that's very helpful to know. Um and I did have an additional question then. Um I noticed we talked about um the ADA requirements for handicap accessible parking. I think it's on page sixty nine of the packet, so it requires two spaces for every what, twenty five units or something. In the building that we're marketing towards seniors, is there any value in putting in additional spaces? Like for you know, either, either as part of the underground parking, I know there's a couple that might be added, but um you know, visitor parking, I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. There will be underground parking that is ADA accessible as well. Um and I'm not sure, it's, it's a good question whether or not the two that are shown on the site plan and two that will be in the underground parking um will be enough. I think if we see that residents um need more of them, we'll certainly add them. Uh we're just, we're basically putting on their per code right now uh out front and underground and um if there is a need that comes up, certainly want to address them and, and help out with their tenants as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Amanda. More questions? Yes, Mr. Bollig.
Thank you. Uh I've got a question for Brett, and maybe it's a little premature for this question, Brett. But do you have a price range for the senior building?
We do, yeah. So in kind of our WIDA package, we had to send kind of what our estimates were and those were kind of given to us by consultants and management companies and WIDA itself. WIDA kind of uh drives those. So from a uh studio to two bedroom, uh let me try to pull those up just so I give you a kind of what our numbers are in the portfolio here. So eight hundred dollars for studio. Um eight fifty to a thousand for a one bedroom. And for a two bedroom senior about eleven fifty to twelve fifty. And those are the difference ranges that I'm giving are for um you know, different uh income brackets.
Hmm.
But those are what's set right now and those are kind of set by a certain percentage of Dane County.
Okay, and that, that includes a underground parking place, right?
It does not. No, we, there's a, the underground is twenty five dollars a month if they want it, if somebody wants it.
All right, thank you. I just thought I'd uh help you shout that out there, so.
Yeah, any questions?
Does that, excuse me, just a follow up, uh does that rent include um like air can, you know, or uh, I'm sorry, electricity, heat, yeah, utilities?
It does, and we'll have to add that on. Um WIDA requires you to add, add it on and in there, which we're not sure of those estimates yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Jenna, I saw you had your, your hand up.
Yeah, I just uh clarification on that, that the eight hundred dollars for the studio is, that's not the, that's the market rate price, or that's the price after the credits have been?
That, that's the, so that That, that's the, so that, yeah, that will be the rent that is paid by the individual.
Somebody who has had, has a subsidized unit, a non-market rate.
Correct. Yeah, all, all these are none of these are market rate units. So they're, they're all, I guess, say subsidized, but they're all WIDA units between the fifty and seventy percent units based off of the, you know, average median income of Dane County.
Right. Thank you. Thanks, Brett. And for public folks who might be watching and thinking eight hundred dollars sounds like a lot of money. In Dane County, it sadly is not. Yeah, I've got, I've got folks working for me who are paying twelve hundred dollars for a studio apartment. So I can see why the eight hundred dollars is based on an income level. Yeah, it's rent, rent prices in Dane County are just crazy. That's all I have to say. Yes, Randy.
So, so Brett, I, I just want to hope that this, this can happen because we get so, we get, we all get emails about the need for the, the senior housing. And I see, you know, you said it was fifty-five plus. The, the need, I don't think you're going to have any problem leasing this out at all. And the need, I think, is really great here. So I, I hope that happens.
Yeah, based on the, the market studies, everything is pointing to leasing up pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And the only reason we say that is if for some reason, I mean, we're not going to lease to anybody under fifty-five for that first twelve months and and obviously put forth great marketing efforts to lease it up. But for some reason, if we're half full, then we just have to figure out a new strategy.
Yeah. But Brett, thank you for including that as part of the project.
Yeah.
Additional comments or questions from board members? Amanda?
Just curious, how would someone be put on that list? What is, what's the procedure going to be? Who do they contact? That kind of stuff.
Yeah, another great question. So as we start building these, WIDA, since Lake Stone Properties, I think we mentioned this in an earlier meeting. Since we have not managed a WIDA project, they won't let us manage it. So we have to hire a third-party management company. We're still going to be heavily involved with the project and with the management company, just our name won't be on it. So we, we believe we have the management company selected, but we're not a hundred percent sure. So in the meantime, if someone wants to email Lake Stone Properties, info@lakestoneproperities.com and just put in the subject Prairie Brook, that's the name of this development, Prairie Brook Apartments. And just say, please put me on the waiting list. We will cert, we already have some people on the list right now, and we'd love to add additional people.
I think that's the first time we've heard the name Prairie Brook.
Oh, yeah.
Nice name.
Nice.
Like it?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, Jenna?
All right, one last question. Now that there is an official waiting list for the property, have you reached? I know we had the public hearing over the summer. There were people currently living in some of the homes that were interested. Have you reached out to them to make sure they get on as well? Or I don't, I don't know, in case they're not watching, but I know they were.
Yeah, yeah. They, they've stayed in touch with our, our team. They're on, they're the first ones on the list. And those are the ones that are in the buildings that will be staying. So there, those were the, the four units and the two homes, kind of where the convenience, yeah, yep, exactly right, where that cursor is. And those are not coming down. Right now, that's for phase two commercial. So ideally, what they're hoping is, you know, we keep those buildings intact until the first or second building in this, in Prairie Brook is completed so they could potentially move over.
Thank you. Sounds good. All right. Any further questions on this item? All right. So then we have a motion and a second to approve the specific implementation plan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for being at this meeting. We appreciate all of the feedback and the time that you take to participate in your democracy. So thank you to all. All right. Going on to item four, this is FYI only. There was a site plan revision for Willie Enterprises, which is in the industrial park at seven forty-eight Cusack Parkway. Brad is adding a little bit more fenced area so that his, so that, for basically to, for secure off-street parking. And there's information in the packet on that. And then items five, six, and seven are all to, like, they're not together, but they're related. And so I will read, I'll read the first one and then, and then I'll kind of explain what's happening here. So item five was discussion of possible action regarding a zero lot line CSM or certified survey map for lot one oh five, Ithaca Court. The planning commission moved and seconded and recommended this approval to the village board. So I'll bring this motion forward if someone wants to second it, and then we can talk about it. Second by Glash, thank you. So I couldn't remember quite exactly what this was, so Mike reminded me. And so basically, in this day and age, banks would like, these are all for duplexes. Banks would like duplexes financed with each unit separate. And so for that to happen, we have to create these zero lot certified survey maps so that each half of the duplex is separate, so that the financing from the bank can go through. And Mike even explained to me that in the future, we might stop using the term duplex and instead use the super sexy term of twin homes, which I would much rather live in a twin home than a duplex. It's not just, that's, it sounds like so much classier, you know? And duplexes are already nice. It's just even, even better. So, so that's what these three things are. They're all, they're all the brand-new duplexes going out on, on Ithaca Court. So any questions on this? Elise can probably explain it much more legalese than I, but that's your layman's term. Any questions on that? All right. All those in favor of item five, lot one oh five, say aye.
Aye.
Then we'll do this two more times. So then I'll bring a motion forward to approve the zero lot line CSM for lot one oh six, Ithaca Court. Would someone like to second that? Second by Jacobson. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, this is, I'm making a motion to approve the zero lot CSM certified survey map for lot one oh seven, Ithaca Court. Would someone like to second that? Second by Jacobson, thank you. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we got to that. Excellent. And then we have item eight. This is FYI only. The Forward Development Group has provided a conceptual layout of lot forty-one and the Tarkenton parcels along Highway CC, the Highlands and Netherwood neighborhood. The Forward Group Development, as a reminder, are the folks that are developing the land. Oh my God, directions west of the village?
To the west. Yeah, next to Bee, next to Beehive.
I'm so directionally challenged. You have no idea that I pretty much guessed. Yes, west, west of Beehive.
Where the sun sets.
Yes.
Well, the sun sets, that's good, yeah.
And, and what I think is a particularly exciting development, they have, they have closed on that Tarkenton parcel. So that's that, that log home and those outbuildings that are there. They've, they've, they've purchased that property. So it can now complete the rectangle of that property. And so they brought some conceptual designs to the planning commission. And the planning commission had some really, really good feedback. The planning commission is so detail-oriented. You know, they, they wanted certain streets to line up. They, they weren't, they didn't like entrances and exits. The, the Forward Development guys took lots of notes. So again, that's a conceptual plan. I would guess the next one that comes to the planning commission looks different based on the planning commission's feedback.
And well, and, and Tarkenton, this is actually going to the planning commission on Thursday night.
Oh, right. Okay.
Yep.
Yep, for GDP. Implementary flat.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
I, I, I looked through the packet. How, how big are the, I mean, these are, like, I think they're condos. They're con, how, how big? What's the square footage? I was, I couldn't see.
Yeah, it's, it's a little hard to tell, Randy. So they are actually apartments.
All their apartments.
Yeah, they, they would be. So there are eleven buildings and there are ten units per building. I think they're largely one- and two-bedroom units. And they're not terribly large, but each building, there's actually garages that are integrated into the first floor. So there's less units on the first floor, more on the second floor. Some folks have to take stairs up to their unit. But every unit would get one garage parking space as well as one outdoor surface level parking. But they would be market rate apartments and, you know, integrate with the rest of the neighborhood.
So, so Elise, a thousand square feet, twelve hundred or bigger or?
Probably in that range.
Okay, all right. I just didn't see it. I just wondered.
And I think we have more information about that with the GDP from them.
Okay.
I mean, I just have the exact numbers.
Thank you. Yeah, Jenna?
Just wondering if there had been any conversations about three-bedroom apartments? Just because I know that there's very few of them and.
Yeah. We, we did bring that up to them. I don't know. You know, I, I think their plans might be to sell this to a separate developer. And so you know, at that time, if they were able to incorporate some three-bedroom units, I think that would kind of be up to that developer to take a look at. But they know, and we, we bring that up with every developer that gives a call that says, I want to be in the village. We say, great, how about some three-bedroom units? So we're, we're working on that from every angle we can. But this is a funny little site. They're actually taking eight of the single-family units, or single-family lots that are on kind of the, this is turned, but this is the northern end actually of the site. So they're converting some single-family lots to multi-family because there is such a need for rental apartment housing in the village.
Okay, so that was FYI only. Any further questions on any of those items? Lots, lots of stuff happening in the village. This is exciting. All right. So items ten, ten, we have some minutes that requiring action with some library board minutes from December ninth, twenty twenty. Jennifer, you've sat through this entire meeting. Is there anything that you would like to highlight from those library board minutes?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just figured there's got to be some sort of purpose in here and listening to us. Okay. Yeah. So we have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We have some future agenda items. Do we need to go into closed session, Mike?
We do not. Nope.
So, so the closed session was, was noticed on here. And it sounds like we are not far, far enough along in the process to have anything to talk about yet tonight. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
So hey, guess what? We get to end earlier than you thought.
Ballack moves a German.
Happy Groundhog Day. Ballack moves a German. Pearson, second. Any discussion on adjourning? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Goodbye, Cory.
Night.
Yeah.
Yeah, bye Cory.